Okay, I'd like to call the Williston Board Meeting to order at 7:07. Okay, adjustments to the agenda, so I have two, right? I'm gonna add 6.3 approve CBU board member, or appoint, sorry. Yeah, appoint.
And that's just a discussion?
Discussion. Yep, so 6.3 and then 11 when we don't need an executive session. So take that out. All right, audience and communication, there's none, so no presentations, so we can go on the principal's report.
Okay, so we pulled one page out of this report that we knew you might not see tonight, and what it says is, this is about, I'm just gonna read just a slight amount so you can get a sense, this is on technology, "The following section responds specifically to the research questions of the study, etc., etc." It says, this is about concerning leadership, "From our discussions with administrators, educators, and staff across the supervisory union, it is evident that when administrators have a clear vision of the role and importance of educational technology, that more attention, time, and energy and resources are the result." And the whole next part is a discussion of Williston, the models we've used, the goals we've set, Bonnie's work, and what kind of progress, you know, was being made. And the last statement says, and you can read the rest later, but it is a good, "When the vision is clear and the leaders communicate plans and expectations and provide adequate resources and infrastructure conditions for success are in place." So we were used as the example of having the right things in the right place and the right structure to not only support education, but the staff development for teachers also and working directly with kids, so we were pretty proud of this, that's why I'm giving you this copy. And if you take a minute, you know, to read it when you have more time, I think you'll find that it's very complimentary. The other, and then I gave you a copy of this, this is the Williston, the Observer, which is the kid issue, and so, so you could have that if you hadn't had a chance to see it.
Wonderful, I love it.
And the last thing is, I wanna give you some numbers on kindergarten. We have a little surprise going on here, which is, it's good and surprising.
And some radio.
So I'll run through this quickly, and we don't, we're not doing anything else, all right, I'm just gonna raise your awareness that when we started the year, you know, when we put our budget together, we were expecting 80 kindergarten students, we're already at 91. And if you look at, there's a pattern here also that we wanted to show you, if you look at last year, we had 75, basically when we started the year, we, and by August, we had gone up to 83, just as the school year was starting, and by the time we got done, we had 88. And you can follow that pattern, you know, and just kind of see what happens over time since the '09-10 year where it was 100 in the beginning, then it was 109 at, you know, in screening, then it's 109 at the beginning, and 110 at, basically at the end of the year. We don't have, the, we only have five kindergarten teachers in right now, so what I did is, I just showed you the math on the side. If we stay with five teachers in kindergarten and we just stay with 91 and nothing else changes, we'll have between 18 and 19 students in every kindergarten class. If we went with six teachers, we would have 15 or 16 students in every kindergarten class.
But the 18, 19 has been pretty much the average that we have observed in the past, though, right? I mean, last year has been pretty.
Yeah, last year was really anomaly, I would say, the two, you know, the year before that and the year before that, we were really running at about 18, 19. The one thing I think we always say is, don't cross 20, don't hit 20.
Right.
You know, but you can see the pattern is, though, we're expecting to get more students.
So project, with projected 80, you're saying five teachers is?
If we had 80 with five teachers.
That's 20, that's, I guess, it's less than 20.
It's 16, yeah, it's about 16. When we said that's okay.
Now we're at 91, so you're saying five is 80.
And, you know, we're not doing anything about this, we'll probably watch what's happening with the numbers and see if we get more kids in and things like that, and come back and talk to you again in May.
How many more is the breaking point?
It's pretty close. Really, I mean, 18, 19 is pushing it.
If we get to 100, then we're at that 20 mark.
And that's really high for a kindergarten class.
Infinity crossing looks like it's cranking.
Right, I noticed that, too.
I know it is, yeah. Some of my friends are moving in there, they don't have kids, but.
So we're 11 over the projection right now, this is Bill Smith's work he does for us every year, it's not ours.
It's just kindergarten, though, so.
It's just kindergarten right now.
All right, well, as long as you feel like you're gonna handle it.
So, we will talk about it in a.
We need another one, how long does it take to get another teacher, or what do we do, what's the contingency plan for 20?
It would be, we would, we, if we're going to do this, the plan is, we have to do it before we actually make the classes. So that means about, May is the deadline, so by the May board meeting, we're gonna have to make a decision about.
Are we gonna get any additional information between then and now that's gonna?
Yeah, because we'll see if we have more people moving in. We've been having a steady stream come in, you know, like when we started the screening, we started off at like 86, and somebody calls and says, "I'm coming," and 87, 88, so we can see, you know, what the pattern looks like, and we're still steadily growing, you know, and it's, and we didn't budget for it. So, that's a problem.
It's a big problem.
Yeah.
I just, I just, I mean, you know, we'll see what happens by the time, May, you said, comes?
The next board meeting.
But just, just did a quick number here, and I just said, okay, looking at, say, 13, in the year 13, 14, right?
Yeah.
April screening was 75, and we ended with 88, so I did the difference between that number and the June census, which is where we landed, I guess, right?
Yeah.
To see the average increase, so I just applied the highest percentage, which would be a 17 percent, which would land us with 100 and, what was it, kids? Times five, 106 kids, which takes us over the 20 mark, so that's a very big problem.
And it is, because you can't solve it easily and neatly if you've already told the parents which teacher their kids are in.
Correct.
And then you have to move them around to create balanced classes because you've added another section. I've done it once before, I'd never do it again, it's really messy, because nobody wants to move their kids.
Right.
So, so we're just keep, I'm just keeping informed, and we're looking at this right now and keep watching it to say, how do we do this, how would we find the money to do it? It would cost us at least $60,000 to do this, at least. So. That's all. I don't have anything to say after that.
Well, I liked the first part of that presentation, the second part's making me nervous.
Yeah.
Wow, it's incredible.
We are working on it, you will hear it next month, there are ways to get ready if we have to do that, and you'll, we'll talk more about that at next month's meeting when we do the next financial report, you'll hear, about how do you do that, then, you know, if it's not budgeted.
Where do you find the $60,000?
Yeah, where do you do, so, anyway, we're trying to problem solve right now, and we'll fill you in next time. That's all.
We'll be fine.
Okay.
It's not doom and gloom, it's a challenge.
[laughing].
Yeah, I know.
That's right.
Well, and do we have space?
We do.
What about space?
No, we didn't, because we already took one teacher out officially, and, and so we have an empty classroom right now, so the question is, do we, do we have to put somebody back into it or not?
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's exciting that we're growing, you know.
Well, I think in some ways, I was getting worried when the population was going down, especially kindergarten.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, so it feels a little better that, you know, okay, people wanna come here, they wanna live here.
Yeah.
So that part's good.
Finding a strong candidate in May would still be possible.
Yes.
It's still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, CSSU debrief, so we covered a lot today. Let's see, we started with the TILT, and that's the leadership team with Molly and Megan. Basically, they continue to look to make sure that the interventions are successful, and they keep looking at everything that they're doing, and then distributing.
TILT, what's that stand for?
It's the, Cindy, can you help me out, it's the?
Tiered Instruction Leadership Team, which is doing the MTSS, which is the Multi-Tiered System of Support.
Of support, okay, so the special education, and just making sure that that is, that the interventions are getting the results that they want, and that's ongoing, and that was in a report, I think, there was something in there.
Yep.
Physical therapists, so in the past, we consulted and hired independent, right, independent PT people?
You contracted for the service.
Contracted outside for them. Now they're gonna hire because of the combined consolidated services through special ed, so they'll hire a couple of people, right, not just one, and they'll work within the district.
So that should save us money, is that the theory?
No.
It's actually cost neutral, but it does give us more direct supervision over the services they're providing.
And more consistent services, I think.
And one will cover all of the students?
No, a couple.
It's a little over, I think it's like 1.1 TE, but it's gonna be three or four people, actually, and you can break it out to give some flexibility.
Because they need, depending on what time of the day, they need services.
Those are for the what students, is there a category that they're filling?
It could be a 504 student, it could be a student on IP, it's just any student that's been identified as needing those kind of services.
Yeah. Trusting the healthcare doesn't pay for that, their healthcare?
Not if it's, if it's something that helps them get educational services that we would normally provide as a school, so like phys adaptive PE, or there's probably other things I'm not thinking of, but that's the one that jumps to mind.
Right, occupational services, so it's the IP.
It's not, it's not PT, like in the treatment of my Achilles tendon surgery, that kind of.
No, 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 I know, I understand, yeah, 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 no, I know, I'm still thinking, even if it were, your insurance would cover for that, whereas, and I just, I, that, that's interesting that these kids, it's not, they're not getting covered by their own insurance, their own health insurance for these types of things, because, I mean, we're teaching them things that they need, that they know, and they need to learn how to do, and that should be part of, I think, of their health insurance, not necessarily ours.
It probably helps.
But anyway, that's a discussion for another table.
We can take that one.
Yeah, we'll defer to Megan. Okay, so let's go on, then we talked about food service and the result of the food service committee work, and basically, what they decided, the program that they liked was the one in Addison County with Kathy.
I don't get her name.
No, I should remember her name, Alexander, but they found, that would require us having additional resources, so at this point, they felt like the system that we have in place is a good system, and it's, it's not, people aren't complaining about it, we're looking at the cost of it, that's our biggest complaint.
Our cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that'll be on the agenda in May to discuss further, to see if, what the next step is for that.
That our CSSU member will vote on?
No, it'll just be, I think, just for discussion, right?
Yeah, because, I'm part of that committee, and I thought we were closing it, yeah, it's just that we found, we found that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I forgot we were on it, so yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just what you said, really.
Okay, so basically, not consolidating our system.
Yeah.
Because it's not broken.
No, it's just a study.
It's not broken.
Okay.
The issue board wants to charge another committee, do we go further, or are we done with the conversation?
We're done with it, yeah. Okay, so that's on the agenda, okay, then we talked about special services, and, let's see, at the next meeting, administration will come to the CSSU board with a recommendation, whether we go with ADM, equalize people, or the child count, and if we, it's the decision of the CSSU board, and if we don't agree and decide, it goes to ADM, so they're still looking into that, and we'll.
And if we'll know more members have input, they should let their issue right now.
And basically, just to remind you, so ADM is average daily membership, so if we go with that model, it will tend to equalize things from year to year. Anything, Cindy?
It's a, it's more consistent than child count.
More consistent, so child count, we could have higher expenses one year and lower expenses the next year, and not really being able to explain that to voters or do anything about it, and having to come up with the money, which we have in the past.
I don't like budgets that do that, that go, my budget, I'm trying to stop it.
Okay, I know, so, we'll know more about that in May, and then the job share piece, those are also at the CSSU level because they're special ed positions, there's one in Heinsburg and Charlotte, and Elaine talked a little bit about the job share policy that they supported for short-term job shares, whether it's based on family needs or health issues, she talked about five years.
Yeah, depending on the.
Between one to five years, depending on the position and the job.
All right, yeah, not a, not a classroom teacher, right?
They do do that, right?
That could be a proposal, it's been done in the past, some with more success than others, it just depends, they're decided every year regardless of whether, what Elaine was talking to us about is, sometimes the job share seems to take on a life of its own, and there should be some kind of point where you go, either you need to permanently resign or come back full-time, because it, it can, it can become a problem.
Yeah, and, you know.
And they do it on a case-by-case basis, right?
And you don't have any in Williston right now, so.
Depending on who's. Interesting, okay, and then they talked about cleaning up the policy, because one policy was pretty small, and then the other one was very specific.
Well, the, she was referring to the procedures, so the policy is sure, but the procedures that outline how you request and what has to be in the proposal, that.
And it has an early submission date, too.
It does, October, like, how would they know?
We gotta look it up.
How would you know about that?
But I think, I mean, that was with intent, because I was here when those procedures were put together, and that was with intent.
Okay.
That, you know, it can cost more to run a job share.
I would imagine.
And so, you know, you have to look at every, you know, every part of it, you know, so I think that it's, it's good, you're gonna review the procedure, so I think that's really important, and just make it clear for everybody about what it stands for and how do you go about requesting it and things like that.
Like anything that's been around for a while, we all assume everybody knows, but there's been enough turnover that it's time to just have everybody look at it again.
I might have been here.
Walter gets points for finding them.
I found that, because they said, we don't think there's anything like that, I said, no, I know there is.
It was, predates my arrival, so.
Yes, I'm probably most senior. I'm CSSU now.
That's a good thing, though, you found it.
That is a good thing.
Right, okay, so, and then the three buses, those are also purchased now by CSSU, and then back to the towns, sign for them, so, the three buses, we went in with the lower bid, and that was in the packet.
Mm-hmm.
The retreat is May 30th, and do you know whether CSSU goes first?
For what?
For the retreat in May.
I'm not sure.
How does that work, I can't remember.
I think locals go first, and then the issues in the afternoon.
So, if anybody, if either of you wanna stay for CSSU, it'd be great, welcome.
Do we know where it's gonna be?
Same place as last year, so it's gonna be the.
Shelburne Road?
Yeah, Shelburne.
Up there somewhere?
Whatever's behind the Lakeview.
Lakeview House, or?
Yeah, something like that.
Fairfield something or other, right? It's that hotel, right?
Yeah, it's that big one.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So that's on the 30th.
It's the weekday, I would say.
It's Friday.
It's a Friday.
They're always on Fridays.
Yeah, I forgot to put that on my calendar.
So put that in your calendar.
It's May 30th from 8 to 4 in the Sunset Bowl of the Comfort Suites.
You know, I don't think that's scheduled for May 30th, yeah, so I'm good.
Okay, so put that in there.
I don't wanna write that down.
All right, I think that's all we talked about, but you, you guys were not there, so we had the technology presentation, which was really great.
Really?
And Williston stood out in many ways, I think.
No, we did, I mean, our teachers did extremely well.
In terms of the vision and knowing how it's used.
And that's what that paper, I think, that'll give you a glimpse of what's going on in Williston if we read that.
Great, but it was a great report, I thought.
And you can go on the website and pick up the CSSU board packet, has a summary in it.
Okay, thank you.
We have our, our summary, so we've been going through it to kind of look at the data for us.
Great, okay, all right, discussion, oh, sorry, FAPAC.
Well, I haven't gone to any meeting yet.
Okay.
It's an easy one.
Tomorrow, right?
I don't know.
That's a squirrel.
No, it's tomorrow, it's tomorrow.
That's right, because it was rescheduled.
Yeah, it's tomorrow, which I sent you an email.
Which one is tomorrow?
The FAPAC.
Oh, I'm not gonna be there.
It is tomorrow.
Well, and I'm not gonna be there.
No, I thought I could move back a week.
I saw it in the school bell, it says tomorrow.
Yeah, I think it is tomorrow, I think you're right.
Apologize me, I won't be there, I'm gonna.
Well, I'm not gonna be there either, okay, that's why I sent you an email. I sent it to, today, like, when I saw the school bell, I'm like, huh.
Okay, so I might have gotten it now, look, all right, I don't know.
I will be there, it's morking, that's why I can't be there, but otherwise, normally I will be there, just not tomorrow.
Okay, the only thing I do know, though, the Big Basket Raffle is Saturday, so come and support and put your bids in on baskets, because that is a big fundraiser for us. Okay, all right, let's move on to discussion matters, 6.1, the calendar.
It got moved.
It got moved?
Yes, that, I think it's, I had it that they moved it back a week to the 17th or something like that, for some reason, I don't know why, I thought it was sent out an email or something like that, it's wrong in the bell, probably.
Or maybe I'm wrong?
I don't know.
Let's see, well, if it is, that's good, because then I will be there.
All right.
Sorry.
That's okay, we'll figure that one out. Okay, discussion matters, the calendar.
So last month, you approved the 175 day, this is the proposed additional days that CSSU has, they have five additional days, it looks like next year they're proposing 176 student days and 10 professional development days, which is the same you have as you have this year, so this is for discussion tonight and then hopefully approval in May.
I didn't see anything that jumped at me, were there any major, like, no half-days again, like, we've got rid of them, right?
I think in some way, our, the biggest problem we have is being able to free up our faculty for staff development days, 10% of your time should be for staff development, we're not even close, so what this did is, we tried to spread out the days that we would work with our staff a little bit throughout the year, which is not that different from the calendar we have now, but they're all full days, so that kids are never doing a half-day and going home, it's always the same, that either in or out, that's it.
Okay.
And so, the idea is that staff development is not an event, it's an ongoing process, so you need to have enough time throughout the year to keep working on it.
And you tag, sorry, and you tagged them to our spring break and winter break, like you did last year, right?
That's right, because we know that.
So that becomes seamless.
It, it kind of gives you that one extra day, and it gives the teacher a chance to come back in and, and work on what they're doing, and then get back in their classroom and really get ready to go, and a lot of times for booking trips and things like that, it's actually better for parents, because it's cheaper when you go off the weekend.
Right.
So that's kind of, and it's also almost invisible, because it just means vacation's one day longer.
Exactly.
Rather than breaking up a, a whole week that's gonna go.
Right, so that's kind of some of the thinking behind it.
Looks good to me.
Okay, yeah, me, too. Okay, anything?
No, no comments.
Okay, communication in board's corner, so Kevin just did the piece, it'll be in.
It's gonna be in the Observer as, as, next Thursday.
This one?
Has a letter to the editors.
Thank you for doing that.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, I meant to get it in on Monday, but that's what I worked in, kind of, crazy work, and.
Oh, work.
That's okay, that's good. Okay, 6.3, so appoint CBU board member, so we have David's letter, right?
Someone does, yeah.
Resignation.
So David Rath from the high school, resigning as of June, and I guess, I'm guessing, because we didn't have our chance to brief each other on the agendas today, I think this is your discussion of how you wanna go about appointing his replacement.
And so, so he is staying through June?
Is my understanding, so you have some time.
Didn't we have a volunteer from last meeting, weren't people interested in him?
We've talked to a few people that are interested, but I think what we've done in the past, we put something in the Observer, saying that we're looking to fill a seat.
So we have to find somebody new, I thought one of us would fill it.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, no, no.
He used to be in.
You, you could seek the appointment, but you'd have to sit on both boards and that'd be problematic.
How would you do that?
Yeah, or you could be appointed and then resign from Williston Board, I guess.
I didn't know if you could, I just.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna recommend that we put something in the Observer.
Like we've done in the past, right?
Yes, that's saying that we're looking for a board member for the CBU board, explaining the, like, the term, and it goes till March, and they'd have to be re-elected, so it's just to fill until.
Yeah.
The next spot, and then, so I guess, just thinking about, and then, what we've done, we've also interviewed people, like Keith.
We should see if any of the budget boardies wanna do it, since.
Yeah, I think that's anybody.
Anybody could apply.
Okay.
You wanna set a deadline for when you want people to tell you they're interested by, so that you could then decide what process, I mean, maybe at your next board meeting, you set that schedule, I don't know, that will give you enough time for a June.
Well, here's what I thought, because we're supposed to do it in 30 days, right?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so if we, if we put something in the Observer, had a deadline of maybe that first week in May, and then interview the second week, and then they could come to the retreat on the 5:30.
That would be great.
You could appoint them at the May 14th board meeting.
In the May 14th.
An interview, you mean?
We'll read through the applications and then, yeah, is there, I mean, I don't know if we have more than one applicant, to see who we would pick.
Well, if you have applications due by May, whatever that May day is.
So we have that week of vacation, so maybe that first week.
So like, if applications were due May 2nd.
One on your hand, no.
The board could do interviews the week of May 5th, and then make the appointment on May 14th.
I don't have anything to write with.
Yeah, so let's do that, how does that sound, you guys?
Yes, good.
Okay, and I'm willing to write the piece.
Thank you.
Pop it in, about that.
Thank you. Do you want Sandy to try and coordinate a date the week of May 5th between the five of you, if you need it, that you'd be available?
If we need it, oh, we're so hopeful, right, that we'll have lots of invitations. Great, okay, so we'll do that.
Do you want, if there's even only one candidate, do you all still wanna interview, or are you comfortable with, if you got a live body?
No.
You may still wanna interview them, it's up to you.
Can we wait and see?
Sure.
What do you guys think?
I agree.
Yeah, I think we have to interview them.
I would think you'd wanna interview regardless.
Yeah, right, some kind of a process.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
They should at least understand what they're getting in June.
So we cannot have a board member, you know, for a period of time if we don't find somebody who's adequate, right, it's not the end of the world, we made the effort, so we continue with the effort.
You could also end up with no volunteers, and we'd have to reopen, and.
Right, okay, so that should work.
Sounds great.
So talk to anybody you know, and then I would also encourage you to have them talk to the CBU board members, because their board's a little different than ours, and it would give them an idea of what the timeframe is and expectations.
Okay.
Thank you for being a blessed buddy next year.
So you could even bring it up at FAP. So you could even bring it up at F A P.
I can, I'll see him tomorrow.
Darren Ackland.
Figure out when that meeting is, okay. Alright, seven point O, action matters, so the personnel leave.
So we have.
Do we need a motion to open up, or no?
You'd make a motion to approve or deny, and then we'd have discussion on the motion.
Alright, go ahead.
Well, they gotta make the motion.
Have a motion for seven point one?
So I make a motion to, uh, uh, discuss, is that?
Approve the leave of absence.
To approve, sorry, to approve the leave of absence.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
So, um, she's a teacher on Equinox, and her, um, she is due now, she, her leave would begin on August twenty-seventh, and she would not reti- re, um, turn to work until November twelfth, so she literally would miss the whole first part of the school year when we start out and getting to know the kids and all that sort of thing, so what she has asked.
That's the sixteen weeks of the, uh, Family Medical Leave Act.
Yes, yeah.
She's actually asking for leave for the entire year.
For the entire, she wanna.
The year, the dates he cited is her F M L A period.
Those are her F M L A dates, but then, you know, what I'm saying is she'd missed the whole first part of the year, she missed meeting the, the kids, she'd come in mid-November and start like the school year for herself, so what she's asking for is, um, could I have the year off so I can, you know, raise my young child and get used to that, and then come back the next year, and she says, I love my job at, um, W C S, um, I look forward to starting the two fifteen school year as a mom. So she loves working here, it's just that she'd miss a third of the year, basically, and so she's asking to take the whole year off, and would the board approve that?
Yeah, we're just gonna hold her position for.
Yeah, yeah.
Her replacement would have a one, would be on a one-year contract.
And when she comes back, the other person, if there's no other openings, doesn't have a job, but that's the way it works.
They don't have another job, regardless of what the opening.
They can be a candidate for any other positions, and they have to interview, just like anybody else. The good news is we get to see somebody we haven't seen before, and we'll know if they're a good candidate or not. So.
That's great.
Did it take action? Do they have to vote?
Yeah, they have to vote.
Okay.
Okay, so do, uh, remind me, so do you have a motion?
Approve the leave of absence.
A motion to approve the leave of absence.
It's already been moved, you just had them vote.
Oh, all those in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Okay, and consent, consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Right.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, nine point O, directors' comments.
No comments.
I have one, just quick one, Walter, I keep forgetting, I, it's so impressive, the Spark results.
Oh.
It's amazing, that extra time and engagement.
It's, yeah, it's been pretty impressive, really, in general, and, um, it is the work of the teachers, they're doing a great, great job. And they're so excited about it, you, you know, how can the students not be excited? They're so excited to see that kinda progress with these kids. So, and they've, um, actually been able to drop four students because of progress.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Okay, it would be interesting just to track if they fall back.
Right, but what it does, though, um, what we found is it changes their attitude about how they see themselves as a student, because it's the first time, a lot of times they've been successful, and they've never been successful, and all of a sudden, they are feeling successful, and if you came to orientation, last year, we had one of the Spark students who was going on to high school actually spoke to the entire faculty, in front of everyone, and, and got up there and just spoke about what it was like to be there, and what did he learn, and, you know, thank you so much for doing this, and that was pretty impressive to speak in front of, you know, almost a hundred and, probably twenty-five or thirty people, as a thirteen-year-old.
That's good, that's a good one.
But that just shows how much confidence he had in himself as a learner now, that I can, I can do this, I proved I can be a learner.
That's wonderful.
So it was great. And the thing we looked at for that format, we're gonna try to do that once a month, so, and put it for the board report, and then put it in the bell, to say, here's, you know, uh, the things that Williston is really doing well, and just identify.
That's great. Gotta toot our horn.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Williston shines.
Great, I know. Okay, so let's do the next meeting dates, so May fourteenth is our regular meeting, the retreat, May thirtieth.
Yeah, what is that, that business meeting?
Uh, I don't remember.
The June one?
Yeah.
That's the one where you do the, the tax anticipated borrowing, the, any final budgets, you authorize the board chair to do summer hires, if you haven't already. It's, it's the one where all the boards meet together for about half an hour, and then we're done. Usually very quick is this meeting.
Alright, I think that's it.
Perfect.
Good, thanks.
Sandra, F A P meeting is the seventeenth.
It is.
You need a motion to adjourn, or declare us adjourned, I'm not, we can't remember who it is.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.